Yep, so first we'll have the swearing in of our new members.
Okay, so I need to swear in the three new members of the Planning Commission for their very first meeting tonight. And as I say, I, as I start to talk about this, just everybody say their name and then kind of repeat after me, and that will help me. So when I say, I say aye, just everybody state your name.
Aye, Bess Levine.
Aye, Steve Opie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the State of California
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, thank you very much. You've all been sworn in. We welcome you to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And the mayor would like to say something.
Okay, it's not going to be that loud. Good. Okay, so I just want to say thank you. Kevin, you are the long-term. Congratulations on that. Peter, thank you. Thank you for serving. Kevin, thank you for serving. Um, these three planning commissioners that I was fortunate enough to appoint that volunteered their time, that volunteered to get wonderful phone calls. Um, you know, Bess, I, um, I wanted you in place because you are the youngest. You've got awesome ideas and I know you'll do well. You're a local. Steve, you, you're like the standard bearer, bearer local, you know, you've, you know the history, you know, you can go through it. You went through it with me. And then Jim, you, you've got the wisdom, you know, you've seen what works. I mean, the business, the business this man has done, he, he's very modest about what he's, what he's done in his past, but I encourage everybody to, uh, recognize, you know, his, his accomplishments from the past and what can work for our future. And again, I can't say the enough for the two planning commissioners that have been here for a little while and I mean, really, we've got a new planning commission. There's a lot to learn, but a lot to do. So I just want to thank everyone, city staff, and, um, yeah, we're gonna be going now, but have fun. Um, I look forward to great things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, you can move on.
We'll start with the flags, too, before I'll stand.
[inaudible] [inaudible] One nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Just make sure you unmute your microphone.
Yours is muted.
It just takes like a pat of the finger.
That's on.
Is everybody's light? Okay.
And next we have a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Gorseau.
Here.
Commissioner Levine.
Here.
Commissioner Opie.
Here.
And Commissioner Grinnell.
Here.
And next election of officers.
So the way this will work is somebody will nominate, first, we have a chair and a vice chair with the Planning Commission, and somebody will nominate for the chair, um, and then we need a second, and then we take that vote, and then you go on to the vice chair.
Well, I nominate Kevin Anderson, along with serving.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, um, I guess, um,
Yeah, we vote on it?
Yeah, we're gonna vote, but you, I guess you can call for the vote on your own. That'll be fine.
We'll call for the vote on the, uh, election of the chairman.
And I think because we're still streaming live, I think we have to do it, um, I have to call everybody, do the votes all by, um, roll call, so we'll do it that way till they tell us different. Um, so we have Commissioner Grinnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Opie.
Aye.
Commissioner Levine.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorseau.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
All abstain.
So that we have a vote of four to one, one abstention. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
High-paid job.
And now we have the vice chair.
I nominate Peter Gorseau.
Call for the
Okay.
Vice chair.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorseau.
Aye.
Commissioner Levine.
Aye.
Commissioner Opie.
Aye.
And Commissioner Grinnell.
Aye.
Okay, it's official. Now we know who you guys, who's gonna be where.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You poor guys. You get so much more work than us.
It's a lot of procedure.
It hasn't got some experience.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully that helps.
Hope that helped, huh?
Yeah.
Rochelle's really nice, and she is very helpful so far.
Oh, yeah.
We'll try.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's all yours, Kevin, now. It's official.
All right, next we have, uh, the minutes, and I'm not sure how that's gonna work with with only two of the commissioners present.
So probably what is going to happen in this case is that you can, um, you guys can discuss it, you can make a motion. What'll happen is there's not enough votes. They'll have to abstain, and then that's what will show on the record.
Okay, yeah. I can make the, the motion to approve minutes?
So you, you, as the chairman, you usually ask somebody to make the motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
I move, we approve the minutes of the April 12th meeting.
And any of you guys can second it? No, because you have to abstain. The vote, you could still abstain, or I guess Kevin can second it. It's just kind of funky because the way we're having to do this, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. All for the vote?
And we'll roll call for the vote?
Okay, so we have Commissioner Grinnell.
Abstain.
Commissioner Opie.
Uh, abstain.
Commissioner Levine. Yep, and Commissioner Gorseau.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Okay. That's just how the vote will show.
And with the minutes approved, we'll move on to public appearances. Per California state law, matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on the next meeting's agenda. Anyone wishing to address the committee at this time will be limited to five minutes. Looks like we're all set. No public appearances. Uh, moving on to next order, we have public hearing, text amendment to Title 17, zoning of the Sonora Municipal Code, amending Chapter 17.64, transient use permit by repealing it in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 17.64.
Thank you. I'll introduce this, and then we do have the city administrator, Mary Rose Rudekanga. Um, she's actually on vacation, but she is gonna do her presentation remotely, and I do see that now we have Nubia also with us, and she is the city attorney. Um, so, um, both of them will be participating in the meeting via Zoom. So, um, like, uh, the chairman said, this is a text amendment to Title 17, and it will amend, um, and replace Chapter 1764. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Mary Rose. She will, um, she has a PowerPoint and will provide some additional information.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I, I apologize, I'm not there in person, um, but we'll go ahead and go, start going through this PowerPoint. Chris, if you would, if you could hit the next slide, please. So, um, go ahead and, uh, show the information on that slide, Chris. So it, what I'm gonna talk about on this one is I'm just gonna go briefly through, um, whoa, the different, um, dates, and I apologize if there's a lag. Um, kind of spotty reception where I'm at. Um, just through the dates in which the city council has discussed, um, amending Chapter 17.64 of the Sonora Municipal Code, the transient use permit program. Um, and it started in February at the goal-setting session, um, with the city council in establishing the goals. Um, you'll, you'll see there on the screen, "Exploring all opportunities to provide best practice and dignified solutions to our growing homeless population and low-income and affordable housing needs." As we're full, fully aware here in Sonora, there is an affordable housing and a, a housing general crisis, um, within Sonora, within the state of California. Um, and you'll notice the other dates in which the city council has, um, agendized and spoken i- in regards to amending Chapter 17.64. Uh, they directed staff on March 15th to bring back an ordinance. Um, April 5th, they directed staff to place a moratorium, or they approved a moratorium, um, in which, uh, staff were, uh, not approving and processing transient use permits, or your short-term rental permits, after March 16th. Uh, April 9th, um, the city council approved a strategic plan, which included looking at it, uh, looking specifically at, uh, Chapter 17.64 and amending that program. And May 3rd, the city council was, um, given a study session at length by myself and, uh, Nubia Goldstein, uh, in regards to the short-term rental program. Um, and at that time, the council gave policy direction to staff to bring back an ordinance that amended, uh, Chapter 17.64. And then this past June, June 21st, the city council received a draft of the ordinance, 880, that's before you, um, and directed, uh, the, the staff to bring forth the ordinance as is to the Planning Commission for recommendation. So, the next slide, please. So there were three specific policies, statements that the council wanted to address when they directed staff on May 3rd at that study session meeting. Number one was to allow, uh, limited short-term rental uses while preventing the loss of housing stock. Number two was preserve residential character and establish operating standards to reduce potential noise, parking, traffic, property maintenance, and safety inspections. We spoke at length, um, at the city council meeting in regards to ensuring that your short-term rental business owners adhere to the same fire safety regulations that your normal transient, um, permit holders such as hotels and bed and breakfast, um, adhere to. So that, uh, fire safety regulations is also part of this ordinance. And number three was to provide an enforcement mechanism for the city to track and enforce requirements. Currently, the city does have a, an ordinance in place which requires short-term rental or your Airbnb, uh, business owners to have a permit within the city of Sonora. However, there's not an enforcement mechanism for the city to be able to enforce that. So this ordinance sets up a, a fine structure to ensure adherence to, uh, the, the ordinance, uh, and to, obviously to the Chapter 17.64. Go ahead, Chris. So just wanted to, uh, remind the commissioners of what's currently on the books in your Chapter 17.64. In 2015, uh, the city of Sonora, uh, adopted an ordinance, uh, which created regulations for transient residential use, and we were actually one of the forefronts in the state to create, uh, to create regulations surrounding your short-term rental program. Uh, many cities are just now catching up to this as they are gaining traction around the state, and we're seeing, um, the effects in which short-term rentals are having on housing. Uh, and so, but however, Sonora was able to bring forth an, an ordinance back in 2015. However, 2015 is quite a different housing environment than now. Um, and so when we look at our, our program right now, we see that it does require a permit and in some cases, a business license. Um, a renewal of the permit is required on July 1st, so your permit is only good for one year. Uh, your payment of the transient occupancy tax, currently, right now, this, that's 12% within the city of Sonora. There must be an all-call, all-call representative within 30 minutes to respond to any issues to the property, um, that arise. Uh, and then we established a maximum number of occupants, uh, 18 or older, two persons per bedroom, plus one additional person per parcel. Um, we're gonna talk about that because we have to, uh, realize that there's actually multiple units on one specific parcel, so we needed to change that up in the ordinance as well to address the number of units, um, as opposed to the parcel. So we'll talk about that when we get to the actual structure of the ordinance. And then, uh, two vehicles allowed to park on the street. That was one of the policies that the council had asked staff to, um, to look at in particular when amending, uh, Chapter 17.64, to address the parking issues that we're having. Um, and so again, when we, once we get into the, to the meat of the ordinance, we'll talk about what we're changing as far as, uh, parking is concerned. Chris, if you can go to the next slide. So, chapter, so ordinance 880, which is in front of you, amends the current Chapter 17.64, which I just discussed. If you can go ahead and click through, Chris. So the biggest difference and the biggest change that you're gonna see in this ordinance is we are, um, when the council directed staff to bring back an ordinance that limited short-term rental while preventing the loss of housing stock, and they looked, we have set up this ordinance to create a primary residency requirement, uh, moving forward. So it doesn't, um, address your current permit holders, does anything moving forward for when the, uh, ordinance is adopted. So it limits your short-term rentals to primary residence where the homeowner lives, meaning, um, the majority right now of our short-term rentals are actually second homes or business ventures. Um, and so going forward, uh, anybody who receives a permit would have to have permanent residency within that unit. Uh, the council did also ask to limit the amount of unhosted short-term rental days in which, um, guests are staying at a residence um, that, um, where no one is on site. And so, but we did hear from, uh, your senior citizens, from your teachers, who like to travel throughout different seasons of the year. And so what is in ordinance 880 is the fact that, um, we are limiting unhosted short-term rentals to 120 days per year, meaning the host or the owner of that unit needs to be onsite within the capacity of their unit for 245 days of the year while that residence is being rented as a short-term rental. And I just, on the right-hand side there, I kind of put a little note for those that are unfamiliar with hosted versus unhosted for your, uh, additional information. Go ahead and, uh, next slide, Chris. So moving on to the second policy that the council wanted us to address, which was preserving residential character. Again, this is a business in a residential neighborhood, so we wanted to ensure that while businesses, we do regulate business in, in residential zones. Um, and so we wanted to be able, the council wanted to be able to preserve that residential character, uh, by, but allowing some form of this short-term rental business. So, uh, they asked us to put a prohibition on special events. That's in that ordinance, amending Chapter 17.64. Prohibition on special events such as wedding, commercial events, et cetera. Uh, again, the onsite parking. So right now, um, your current ordinance allows for two vehicles to be parked on the street. This new ordinance, which will be amending Chapter 17.64, will require that, um, permit holders will have to have onsite parking at, at the, at the parcel or at the unit, um, and allowing the host to park on the street. Now that's the change there. Now, we do know that there are gonna be some difficulty with, um, owners that have short-term rentals in the downtown area, and onsite parking is not, uh, they do not have access to onsite parking. So there is a caveat, uh, written in ordinance 880 that allows staff on a case-by-case basis to waive that requirement. Uh, but again, it's on a case-by-case basis, um, and that's only for those that do not have the ability to have onsite parking. Um, we did also address trash collection must be required for all permit holders. Uh, and then again, those fire safety requirements that I talked about at the beginning, uh, moving forward, um, all permit holders will be required to, uh, address fire safety requirements and also to have a fire, uh, safety inspection by the Sonora Fire Department on a yearly basis. Um, and so those will be something when we move forward, and then also for your current holder, permit holders, they will have to come into compliance with those regulations. And then again, um, keeping in place that local contact person, um, in case there's a, a need that arises when there's an unhosted, um, rental, uh, during those 120 days of unhosted rental, we still need the ability to have a local contact person. Go ahead, Chris. So, and then, uh, the third policy in which the council wanted staff to address was providing an enforcement mechanism for the city to track. So, um, now in, or, in ordinance 880, the violations of the ordinance are, um, determined to be a public nuisance and subject to Chapter 1.20 of the municipal code, which allows us to issue fines for both property owners and for, and guests for non-compliance, because we understand there are gonna be issues that arise that are not necessarily the, um, the property owner's fault, um, such as parties and so forth that could potentially, um, have a fine on a guest. So just, um, in case, I, I don't, I know, I can't see you guys in person, so I apologize, but in the ordinance itself, the fines are listed up to $500 per day for your first violation and $1,000, um, up to $1,000, uh, per day for every subs, for any subsequent violation. Now that's up to, and I just wanna, you know, make that clear. The city of Sonora never just starts issuing fines. There's a lot of, um, of noticing that, that goes out before, um, staff starts issuing fines. So, um, we, we as staff would be getting in contact with, with, uh, homeowners or guests before the fines ever take place. But this does allow staff to be able to start and have an enforcement mechanism. As, as you heard previously, um, in, in previous city council meetings, we do have 36 valid current permit holders, but there's actually about 46 that operate within the city of Sonora. Um, even though we have sent out letters and so forth to those that continue to operate without permits and outside the confines of the municipal code, uh, because there's no fine structure in place, it makes it very difficult for those to actually come into compliance, um, when they're out of compliance. And then also, this ordinance gives us the ability to deny, suspend, and revoke a property owner's, um, a permit for continued violations. Um, so again, that's another teeth to, to the enforcement mechanism that the city council had asked staff to put into an ordinance. Chris, if you could, next slide. So this is a big, this is talking about the amnesty and the exemption, um, part for your current permit holders. Like I just stated, we have about 36 permit holders currently. Um, actually, Kim Campbell and I just made contact this previous week with a couple of, of permit holders that had not actively renewed since, I believe, Ja- July of last year, July of 2020. Because we wanted to ensure that if people were closed down for COVID, um, we wanted to make sure that those would come into good standing so that they could be exempt or part of this amnesty period. Um, so there is one portion of the current permit holders that would be exempt, and then the rest of this ordinance, they would have a grace period or an amnesty period of about 90 days to come into compliance. So the exemption part is the, the primary residency required, requirement. As of right now, about 75% of our current permit holders, um, it is not their primary residency, so it would be obviously would not be, we, they would not be able to come into compliance with that part of this ordinance. So we are going to exempt the current permit holders from that requirement. Uh, but everything else in the, in ordinance 880 and this new amended, uh, Chapter 17.64, they would need to come into compliance within 90 days of adoption of the ordinance. So, uh, 90 days come to compliance of the fire safety regulations, the parking requirements, the trash collection, and so forth. Um, and we're also changing the, um, the term of the permit. Before it began on July 1st, expired June 30th of every year, we're moving it up to January 1st to December 31st to make it concurrent with our business licensure program to help, uh, permit holders that are having somewhat of a hard time being able to remember to renew their permits, to make it, um, more commonplace when they come forth with any type of business license. So that'll be a little bit easier for staff and for the permit holders themselves. Next slide. So just for, planning commissioners, just for your own, um, information, looking at the timeline, uh, of when this ordinance, and for the public as well, when the ordinance, um, will be heard in front of either the Planning Commission or the city council, and the, um, the estimated, um, timeline for adoption, we're, we are now July 20th, or excuse me, July 12th, June 21st, the draft was received there by the city council. Uh, now we're at the Planning Commission. We will have a public hearing, a first and second reading in August, uh, for first reading, and then September 7th for your second reading with full, uh, and the ordinance will take full effect in October. So that's when those new permit holders, um, or anybody who would apply for a, a new permit, when those, um, this ordinance would take effect, that they would need to be able to be in compliance with those new regulations. If you recall, we are currently under still a moratorium, so we are receiving applications, just not processing. Any of those applications that we have received since the time of that moratorium, they would be under this, um, under this new ordinance if it, if it becomes, uh, adopted by the city council, um, and so they would need to, they would fall under these new guidelines and regulations. So at this time, I will answer any questions of the Planning Commission, and I hope I didn't speak too fast. I wanted to make sure I didn't run out of cellphone coverage or, and so forth.
Questions of staff from the commission?
I have a bunch of comments.
I am, I have no questions. I, I know, um, both Mary Rose and, uh, Rochelle did a really good job explaining it to me. And when I went and I was reading through it at home, I'm like, why am I reading this? I, I read through the whole thing, but I'm like, they literally told me all this, like, really well, because I remembered all of it. So, thank you, Rochelle, and Mary Rose.
I did want to add a couple things. Uh, first, uh, Nubia, do you have anything that you would like to add? Because I know you're on here tonight as well.
Um, well, one thing I'd like to add, and evening commissioners and staff, and I hope I'm coming in clearly, I'm having the same, uh, uh, I guess concerns as Mary Rose for connectivity, um, is, I guess, just to reiterate the same thing Mary Rose mentioned, is that this is a complete overhaul of the city's current, um, regulations, and it's really aimed at, at maybe addressing some of those key points that, um, staff had evaluated, is potentially being deficient, and direction from the city council policy-wise. So we're hopeful that it is sufficiently clear for the Planning Commission to, to see where we're basically plugging in those holes and, um, providing, uh, the needed flexibility to maintain, maintain the, the housing stock and, and also, um, address, um, concerns for members of the public that potentially have properties and are, you know, worried about the city's regulations.
Thank you. And then the other thing I wanted to add, um, that is that, um, we do, under the, uh, primary residency, they would be allowed to rent their house, um, for, the whole house as long as they met the, um, 120-day maximum. They also would be able to rent rooms out of the house, their existing house, and they also would be able to, uh, have a junior ADU, which is up to 500 square feet, which would be a separate unit within the house that they could create and rent that under this ordinance as well.
I do have a question. Uh, as far as, I know we've come up with a couple times in the last few years about, uh, commercial property being residential and switching back to residential zoning, uh, or, or use permit or use. And, uh, would, I, I see that this is about, you know, preserving our, our residential areas. Would, I, I see that this is about, you know, preserving our, our residential areas, uh. Would this apply to the commercial areas where residents? Residential areas are located? Were there actually are commercial, you mean? Like on that South Washington stretch where it's owned commercial, but there's residential, uh. This would fall on that as well?
Anywhere, um, where they have a primary, as long as it's their primary residence, it would apply.
Any other questions?
Looks good.
Questions?
He's got a whole list.
So uh, just clarification, are they comments or questions? Cuz if they're. So uh, just, just to let you know, so if it's not a question to staff. I would recommend that you open the public hearing and let the public comment. And then those types of comments can happen after you close the public hearing. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, um, when you're ready, you can open the public hearing portion?
Okay, as far as questions go from the commission, we're all set, we'll open the public hearing, uh, we'll limit to five minutes. Anyone?
Three minutes is our standard now, yeah.
Three minutes, if you would like to address the commission, uh, please stand at the lectern. Go ahead.
My name is Mary Ann Wright. Welcome all the. Anyway, my, my hobby is.
Is old buildings that no one wants to buy, that no one will loan money on them. So I'm never in competition because they're always ready to get torn down, and so my mom. Likes to save her money to lend to me short-term and we buy things and we sell them back to someone as a house. And we make very little money, but it's our art, it's what we do for art. And we've been doing this for probably thirty-five years and um, I've never had a. A short-term rental except my little cabin out at the ranch, we tried a little bit, but my goats kept rubbing on people's cars, so we nixed doing that. And we have a couple long-term rentals that are just mobiles, not that I wanna be a landlord, but they're out there because they, I inherited them with the um, with the ranch. But um, a year, a year ago, a year and a half ago, um, my next door neighbor from Servenny's. Couldn't sell his building because it needed a lot of work and he begged me, Theo from Watch Shop to buy it, all these people, nobody would buy, nobody would buy, couldn't get a loan. Young people couldn't buy it. So I bought it and I went up to planning and I talked to Darren um, about making the back an Airbnb because. It has a garage that no one liked and they all wanted to tear it down, but historical society liked it and I like it, it's tin, it has a beautiful backyard. It had a kitchen and a bathroom already in it, a bedroom, but no closet and it's not suitable for a long-term rental, but it used to be a living quarter back in the gold rush days. So um, we spruced it up to make it an Airbnb, but me not being really. Up on all of these, the permitting process, um. And I even had a council member tell me that she would stay there when it's done because she liked it so much. And I remember a council member writing a letter to the editor about how we need T O T tax to help the city, so I'm thinking, I'm doing a good thing. So now I have a commercial property with a beautiful Airbnb and it's got its own address, it enters from. Green Streets, fifty-seven South Green Street and the front of Tar Flat is sixty-two South Washington Street. And I really feel like there should be. Some way that instead of just looking for more long-term rentals for. People that we should really look at hoping that we can figure out how to have young people own houses. Which might be making Sonora historical status so they can get loans to fix up these historical houses, they don't either get torn down or bought by investors. And made into rentals, so, cuz rent's high for people and people want pride of ownership and they wanna fix things. Up themselves, or they like how we fix them up cuz we do them with wood floors and nice windows and we make them look old again, but new. So, and anyway, and I remember when Rose Court's apartments were torn down when the new courthouse went up and that was my Jess, Aunt Jessie lived there. And fifteen units were torn down, those were apartments, that was, you know, housing for people. My, I was born at Mills Garden Apartments, that's where my mom and dad lived. And rentals have always been hard to find in Sonora because people lived in them, they're all houses with owners in them, it was. Elks Hill where I was raised, they're mostly all rentals now, where they used to all be family homes, so. Getting down to it, I wish there was.
Sorry, Mary Ann, but the three minutes are up.
Okay, uh, just a way that we could have a special permit to look at something that's not taking up housing and still let us do our art and. Unique things, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Okay, we'll pull it back to the commission uh, for, for further discussion. Jim?
Section that you're tearing out.
I'm sorry, is Jim's mic on?
Oh, okay. Um, is that better?
Yes, now we can hear you.
The permit costs fifty dollars and the uh, renewal is twenty-five dollars, but in the new section. There isn't a provision for fifty dollars and twenty-five dollars, it just says it's up to the um. Council's uh, permits and fees, so there's no dollar amount attached to. From the old, old time to the new time.
Yeah, I, I, I think that they did this so that they can change it as they wish.
Well, I, I, I understand that part, but you know, I mean, to be, to be fair and.
Yeah.
And then you make the, the um, the penalties a thousand dollars a day, which I think is outrageous.
Well, yeah, yeah, and then that's if you are really bad.
I, I understand that, but you'd get somebody who's, who's hasn't done this or just like, uh, you know.
So can I, let me clarify for you, Jim, why that's the way it is. Most fees are set by resolution by the city council. So the standard for when you're charging uh, permit, a fee for any type of a, a permit such as this. It would be set by the resolution of the council, so once the ordinance is adopted. Or they might take it at the same time that the ordinance is finally adopted. Uh, there'll be a resolution that comes forward that sets the fees, but it'll be done in a public meeting. They, they will set it in a public meeting.
So we can assume that this thousand dollars and the five hundred dollars will go away?
That's not the same thing, the fee for the permit.
I understand that, that's the twenty-five dollars, but I'm, but I'm also talking about this.
No, what's said in there is what that will be until the ordinance is changed.
Well, I, I think that's too high, like personally, you know. Maybe you've been away a week, okay, and now you're coming back in and you owe seven thousand dollars to the city, you know, for something that. You know, you, you just can't make any money and, and the fees weigh outrageous. And then uh, the parking, no guest or of a short-term rental shall park a vehicle. Uh, on the street, okay, or in an unpaved area. Well, now, they, it says including without limitation a boat or trailer or recreational vehicle. Well, some of these places don't have that, so. You know, what if they only want, need one space on the driveway, but you're telling them they can't park on the street, I just don't understand it.
Well, that was the exemption for case by case.
I can tell you, I had an experience. I live up on Summit, across from a short-term rental.
Yeah.
They rented to a doctor, put a house trailer across from my garage and I could not back out my driveway. That's the reason for that.
Okay.
Our streets are too narrow.
I, I can understand that part.
Yeah, you can't have.
But, but this, before it says anything about the trailer, it says all vehicles basically, okay? So you can't park even a car there?
If it's a great big car, no?
No, that's, but that doesn't, there's no, no dis.
But that's the reason for the exception that's in there that allows, we can, on a case by case basis, we can look. At the unit and see if there's enough parking available on the street to accommodate it. Um, because there are situations in Sonora where, where there is a problem and that's why that exception is put in there.
Narrow, narrow streets, a garbage truck can't cover, yeah, a garbage truck could not come by.
Yeah, I can understand, okay, so another thing that I see is you have to have somebody on call within thirty minutes. What happens if it's at two-thirty in the morning, okay, is somebody gonna be on call until three o'clock?
Yes, that's the requirement, that's the requirement now and that will be the requirement going forward if adopted.
Yeah.
That's a, that has to be, Jim. It, you know, if there, if there are parties going on at two-thirty in the morning and neighbors are getting upset. There has to be somebody available for the police, for the police to be able to notify.
Okay, um, on page ten, number B, it says a local contact person shall be available. By, and I, this twenty-four hours basis needs to be after the word available. In other words, a, a local contact person shall be available on a twenty-four hour basis by telephone. So it needs to, part of that sentence needs to be changed. And then, um, all barbecues and grills no less than ten feet away from the structure, is that, is that part of the fire department's checking? Or is, how, how does, how do you, how do you enforce that? You got a backyard, you have a tree there, you have a barbecue there, that's on page eleven and down at the bottom.
That is the requirement for the fire inspection, the yearly fire inspection.
Okay, so.
So the fire, the fire department will be checking that.
Are these people gonna be uh, checked by the fire department on an annual basis, a monthly basis?
On an annual basis like any other transient business.
But it didn't say annual in there that I read, I thought that the word annual needed to be added.
It does, it does.
Does annual.
Fire inspections are on an annual ba- basis.
Okay, oh. And. The penalties, number on page twelve, it is a misdemeanor or public nuisance to violate any of the provisions of this chapter. You're talking about chapter seventeen point six four, right?
Correct.
So you should put seventeen point six four in that sentence there, so it's not just anything in chapter seventeen, just seventeen point six four.
Yeah, that's the standard line, you're talking about that chapter, so that's the correct language. That's how it is in all of the municipal code, that's how it's set up. When it refers to the chapter that you're in, it's talking about chapter, that chapter that you're in, so that is the correct language.
Okay.
That, that is how it should be worded.
Okay. Well, I think that's. Oh, the other thing is that it looks to me like. On page fourteen, after such a hearing, the hearing officer. What are the qualifications of the hearing officer? And then it goes down to you can appeal to the city administrator. And the city administrator's decision is final and conclusive, it seems to me it should go to the. City council as opposed to the, after the city administrator.
Nubia, would you like to speak to that?
I can, um, so as to that point, the idea is to provide um, a little bit more flexibility for staff to deal with the. Um, appeal process and ultimately, there is a general shift of leading away. Taking the, the appeal, the, the bulk of all the appeals that could go to a city council and have it more at a staff level. Um, it would be an inundation of appeals for every potential permit denial or decision by staff. If it goes to the city council, so there is a little bit of a shift in that. And that actually mirrors some of the provisions that we've updated in other portions of the code, so in that, in that sense, it maintains consistency internally throughout the code.
That, and this is Mary Rose, yeah, that's just, I was just gonna say, that's consistent with other provisions of our code. In which there's an administrative hearing officer and appeals go to the city administrator, most notably traffic fines. Um, if there is an appeal of a traffic fine, that gets appealed to the city administrator.
Well, I still think the city council should have a, have a say, that's just my opinion. Because this, you're talking to big dollars here potentially and. You know, the city administrator, I love her, but she's so involved in the development of this. That she has to be a little bit biased and I, I just think that the city council is the, is the right place for the appeal. That's just my thought. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, great points. And, and would, would it be correct in thinking that the city council could be inundated with thirty appeals to, to deal with? Uh, at that point, um, since this is such a. Widespread business in, in our community?
Well, there's also forty-six, as they were saying, units, so they might have forty-six appeals.
Well, speaking to.
Mary Ann.
Your, your mother, Mary Ann, point earlier. You know, they bought this property and other people have bought these properties and so you've got some properties that are, let's say, in transition. Because they didn't get their application in by the sixteenth of the month. And maybe those that are owned by. Residentses who live, who live in that, in that area, maybe those could also get on the approved list. And I think the, the real comparison is how many new building permits for additional housing have been built during this period of time. Maybe it's a hundred, maybe it's fifty, maybe it's five, I don't have a feeling for how many. And I don't, the ratio, in other words, are we increasing in housing or are we going down in housing? And is this forty-six seriously impact?
I think we had that number previously, how many housing?
Kim, how many new residential units did, were created in the city of Sonora last year?
I'm thinking two or three.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's a serious problem. It's a serious problem, man.
And the year before there was. One?
Only a year before that, zero.
When I knew.
So, so the other question then is, is looking at the availability of lots, okay, are we increasing, are we increasing the size of the city? You know, in other words, annexing new territory that is basically flat that can be built upon or are we annexing the top of a mountain?
So there's lots of pieces to the puzzle and those are things that are being looked at as well. Um, so yeah, it's, it all, it takes all of it to make it work.
Yeah, and I, I know that it's hard to build in this county in general, so I don't know how it is in the city, but I know the, just. It is not the easiest thing in the world, a lot of people from like the valley and all that, I mean, you put sticks together and. They seem like they sign everything off and then they come up here and they're like, hey, what do you mean I gotta do this and that?
And I, and I see vacant lots that have been vacant for years and years and years, you know, and, and.
And I don't, I don't know how to fix it, so.
Well, thank you for your time.
Any further discussion with the, the council? Or commissioner? We'll close the commission comments and. Anything further Rochelle, what do we need to move on to?
What you're gonna do now is you're gonna ask for a motion, would be what you would be looking for. If discussion of the commission is done, then you'd be looking for a motion.
Okay, any further discussion before we look for a motion?
And would you guys like me to clarify what that motion would be? Because it is our first meeting with many of you, so that this would be a motion, um, if approved, it would be a recommendation to the uh, city council. Through the adoption of resolution oh seven twelve twenty twenty-one A, which is attached. Um, and it recommends that the council would be to approve the attached ordinance, which is ordinance eight eighty. Um, and the resolution is what you guys are actually approving, it includes um, the findings and then um. And then the vote would be included with that and it is a recommendation to approve the ordinance as it's, it has been presented here tonight.
Can I ask one little question, just to. She talked about it earlier, but the section I applies to short-term rentals operating with a continuously active transient occupancy pact. What about the people who dropped out for COVID and that they come back now or there, or some of her still in kind of?
I can, I can address that Rochelle.
Thank you.
So, um, so uh, Kim Campbell, myself have been actively talking to permit holders. So we have, we have spoken to all current permit holders. Those that have dropped out uh, due to COVID have been. Told that they need to renew to be able to be in good standing by July first. So those, we have a list of those that are in current good standing as of July first. Um, and so there were just a couple, correct, Kim? That chose not to renew and will go off the list and will, will not be able to be able to receive an, a, a, a. A permit going forward, but it was just a handful, I believe two or three, correct, Kim?
Three remaining, outstanding.
Yes, three remaining outstanding, uh, but the others we have made contact with, we've made contact with everybody. Um, and, and those uh, that had not renewed due to COVID or other circumstances. Were given the opportunity to come in to renew and to become um, in good standing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a comment if we're still in that section of things.
Sure, we haven't moved any motion.
Okay, great. Um, I think it seems like there's a, at least a possibility for, without changing anything else from the ordinance that the city council recommended, but maybe a possible exemption to apply for a transient use permit in the downtown commercial district in, within a business that's already running. So like the downtown area where, because there's already several that exist, like in buildings that already have businesses in them that maybe the unit doesn't have a kitchen or something like that. It's maybe not suitable for a long-term rental or for a family to live in permanently. That that could maybe be an option. Because it doesn't seem like it would get rid of any housing stock or interfere with residential character. And I don't think that it would interfere with the city's overall plan. So I think that could maybe be added.
Can I, can I address that?
Sure.
Because we did talk about that. So and Mary Rose and Nubia, you can jump in as well. But the issue that comes up, if we were to designate an area because of the influx of people that were calling us and reaching out to us, there was a concern that if the city exempted one area of the city, that area would be inundated. And while you might not think about it as a residential area, those units in the city are, that were, are within our commercial corridor in our downtown area, those units are usually occupied by, not always, but especially our lower-income families or households, because they don't need an automobile, they can walk to services, they can, they, they can get to medical easy. Everything's convenient for them within that downtown area. So we had to be really careful that we didn't actually impact our lower-income households by designating an area that suddenly people could make a lot of money on by renting them for short-term rentals and pushing those low-income households out of their housing. So a lot of thought went into that. It wasn't done in a vacuum, but really looking at what would that happen to our downtown and all of those smaller units that are currently occupied by those lower-income individuals if they suddenly exempted that from that.
And just to follow up with Rochelle said, that was actually brought up with the council as a, an alternative to allowing one area, specific area, it's like a tourism area. And the council did not agree to that when they directed staff on how to write the ordinance. So that was, that was given to the council from a policy direction on how to craft that ordinance as far as allowing certain areas within the downtown area to be, to be parcel out, to be allowed for short-term rentals. And they, they rejected that notion.
Okay. Sorry, I don't think I explained myself well. I didn't mean an overall exemption from an entire zone. I meant an option to apply for an exemptions, which would maybe encompass some units that wouldn't be able to be used as any other housing. That's what I, that's what I meant.
Mr. Johnson, one more que, point. You mentioned earlier that a accessory dwelling unit could get one of these permits, but this, but this says that they can't get a permit. And I, I don't see why an accessory dwelling unit on the back, whether it's in the back or backyard of an existing home where the homeowner lives there, why that can't be-
Because again, you're looking at ways to increase housing and not, so, and looking at that, making an ADU exempt would take away housing, because ADUs do create housing in the city. They create a lot of housing in the city, because that's really, we're so small that it is a way for us to get rental units in the city or to accommodate people's families or other things. So what we looked at was doing the junior ADUs, because in a junior ADU, you can, you have to live there in order to have it. And so you can have up to 500 square feet within your residential unit. You could convert that. Or if you already have a unit that's 500 square feet or less, you could use that for Airbnb, but, or a transient use. But if you have larger units, 12, because they can go up to 1,200 square feet in an ADU, those units would have to be rented long-term, longer than 30 days.
I, I guess I still don't understand the, the thinking, okay? To me, it seems to me if you build a unit in the backyard or have a unit already in your backyard, some of these people already do, okay, that I don't see why they can't rent that either on a short-term or long-term basis. It's not taking away any additional housing. What you want to do is make housing more desirable to build, okay? So some of these units might only be rented in the summer, okay? They might be long-term during the winter for, let's say, somebody's going to school, okay? But you're taking away the possibility of earning some money on that, which is going to help them pay their mortgage off earlier.
So every unit that you take away, that's an existing unit that could be rented by somebody long-term, every one, or a house long-term, is actually taking units away from the housing stock.
Okay, but-
So any, so any, any one that you do, you actually are, if it converts to a transient use, it is being removed from the housing stock.
But let's say-
So that, that is why it was discussed and that's why they went with just strictly the junior ADUs.
But let's say, okay, I've got a space in my backyard. I don't have anything there now. If I come in and say, I'd like to build a little ADU on the back and I'd like to rent that, that's, that's new housing, but it's not necessarily long-term housing. It's available for short-term housing. If it doesn't get built, it doesn't help anybody.
If it's not long-term than 30 days. Go ahead, Mary Rose.
So Commissioner Grinnell, so the state is actually looking at this really heavily with the ability, ability to create housing long-term and looking at ADUs as being that caveat to build housing long-term. We're seeing changing in laws coming down quite rapidly from the state to address this. And they're looking specifically at, at bills that are going to split up single-family homes and then allowing for administrative permits to build ADUs, but to address long-term housing only. And the state is really taking a hard stance that we have to address long-term housing. And even with your ADUs, excuse me, so even with your ADUs, that the state and the policy that was directed by the city council was that if there is an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, that is not your junior ADU, but a normal ADU that could be up to 1,200 square feet, and that would potentially be a new housing unit, they want those to be addressed as a long-term solution, not a short-term solution.
I understand what you're saying. And I've talked, I've talked to one of my friends, okay, the state's talking about taking lots and putting them in half and building additional unit in the back and then two small units. So you get six instead of one. I understand all that. But what I'm saying is maybe a little 500 square foot.
You think it's less than 500 because of junior ADU, right?
500 or less, yeah.
And that can be rented on a, on this permit?
Yeah, as a short-term rental.
As a short-term rental.
They're done with the public.
But this, what you're saying here is it doesn't say that. It just says-
It says that exactly.
Just says each short-term rental occurring. So 500 square foot needs to get into this document.
No, the junior ADUs are-
It does. Commissioner, it, it, the, the ordinance was drafted in a way that junior ADUs are exempted from the definition of a short-term rental.
I didn't, I didn't find that in here. I read it, but I didn't find that. Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry.
I got the same point you did. I thought the same thing, Jim. So you're not the only person that thought that. I'm sure you guys wrote it right. I just probably didn't read it right.
I didn't find that in there.
Further comment? Any follow-up questions, Connor?
No, you just call for a motion and they, it goes from there.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
So do we, just as a curiosity, do these comments then go to the city council?
So the city council will see the minutes from the meeting and they'll see the vote. So they'll see the comments and they'll see the vote. And whoever makes the motion-
I'll, go ahead.
I'll tell you, Peter.
You can say all that? I can't say all that. I'll make the motion.
I second that motion.
You're going to make the motion to adopt resolution?
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were voting.
You're good, Chris. He's going to do the, you're going to do a second to the motion then, or to approve the resolution?
Okay, so he wants to adopt the resolution. I understand that.
Right.
So.
So every motion has a, somebody that makes the motion.
Okay.
And then that somebody on the commission needs to second that motion before it can go to a vote. So, so where you, if you're in approval with what his motion is, then you, you would second it.
Okay.
Because he might add a caveat or something that you might not like, or you might not want to approve this.
Go ahead and read the, my motion.
Okay, I'll read it to you. So you're just, if, if you're doing with, what's recommendation in the staff report? So, so Peter has moved that this planning commission adopt resolution number 07122021A, recommending to the city council approval of ordinance 880 with a specified text amendments to chapter 17, the zoning ordinance, so.
Okay.
If you agree with that, then you can second it. If you don't, you should not.
Seal, sorry, Peter. I thought we were just moving through a-
So now you-
Do we have a second?
You can if you want to second it.
Okay, as the chairman.
To move it forward, you can for a vote?
I will second and look for the vote. I, I'm looking at something that, again, is well-written by the staff.
Yeah.
So you want me to do the vote?
We'll look for a vote. We have to do roll call again?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner, Chairman Anderson?
Aye.
Chairman Gorseau?
Aye.
Chairman Levine?
Aye.
Chairman Opey?
Nay.
I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Opey?
Okay, sorry.
No?
No, no.
Okay, and Commissioner Grinnell?
No.
Okay. So we have three in favor and two opposed. Okay.
If we had some changes.
Yeah, that's, that was my thought, too. There, and I know they spent a lot of time on it. I'm not faulting you guys for that, but there's a few things I didn't agree with in it.
Okay. So that would be that. So now we have no discussion items. You can go ahead and continue now if you-
No discussion items, no staff reports or news to speak of. What's that?
Correspondence? That one's next.
And we have none.
Okay.
So just to clarify, there was a quirk on our agenda, because normally we have the, I do a quick little report to update you guys on anything. So let me do just a couple things under correspondence or just let you know. So we will have a meeting in August. We have two items right now out, that are going out for advisory comment. They are private projects, so it won't be like this where it's a text amendment. So those will be coming forth to the meeting in, on August 9. This time you guys had, we had a meeting kind of ahead with different groups. The next meeting, you'll just, Kim will call you when your packets are ready. And then you guys can pick them up at your convenience. They're usually ready the Wednesday or Thursday before the meeting. So she'll always call you and say, your packet's here. And you guys can come in and pick them up.
Thanks for all you guys do. Everybody, you know.
You're welcome. No problem.
Everybody, Mary Rose and everybody, you know, it's a whole team. It's a whole team effort. We can see that, you know.
Yeah.
You guys do a lot more than I could, that's for sure.
Well, we try to keep it going. That's, that's what we do. So that's all I have tonight.
That's all you have, Rochelle. Thank you. And we will adjourn.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.